Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming and joining us tonight. It is 7:00 PM and it is December 2nd, 2025. This is the Twilla County Council meeting. We are located at the county building on the third floor in the council chambers. Again, welcome. We've asked our county attorney, Scott Brighthead, to lead us in a pledge of allegiance. Would you all please rise?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Scott. As far as roll call, we have Scott Brighthead, county attorney. As far as council, we have Councilman Hoffman, Councilman Thomas, Councilman Stromberg, Councilman Hamner, Councilman Wardle is excused. We have our county manager, Andy Welch, Assistant County Manager Brittany Lopez, County Clerk Tracy Shaw. And thank you each of you for coming and joining us this evening. That will bring us down to public comment. Is there anybody out in the audience by a raise of a hand that would like to make a public comment? See in one, three minutes. Okay, thank you.
Counsel Allison McCoy, Twilla County Auditor. Tonight, the council will again discuss whether to increase the position in the auditor's office from half to full time. It has been stated that I have not provided adequate justification. In July, this council removed purchasing duties from the auditor's office and reassigned them to the manager's office. And in October, additional duties were removed by resolution. At no time was the auditor's office consulted about these changes, and no explanation has been provided to employees or the public regarding the basis for this restructuring. These actions have created several months of uncertainty at the county, and as a direct result of that instability, the county has now lost a professionally trained employee within the auditor's office who obtained stable employment elsewhere. According to widely accepted standards, the cost of replacing a trained employee is 90% to 200% of their annual salary. For the employee we lost, a conservative calculation replaces that cost at approximately $130,000 with benefits. The newly created full-time position within the manager's office carries a similar annual cost of $130,000, and this impact has not been fully acknowledged in any budget discussions to date. Combined, the council's July decision represents a $260,000 fiscal impact to the county. At the last meeting, Councilman Hoffman noted the importance of evaluating decisions not only in today's dollars, but in future dollars. Applying that same standard here today, $260,000 is nearly enough to delay a tax increase in the assessing and collecting fund and fully fund the recorder's office positions recommended by the state tax commission. In 10 years, that amount becomes $349,000, enough to retire the remaining airport debt. In 20 years, it will become $468,000, enough to meaningfully strengthen the indigent defense fund. In 40 years, it becomes just over $844,000, which may even be enough to upgrade the sound system in this room so the public can clearly hear the long-term consequences of decisions made without transparency. Counsel, we have repeatedly been advised by external auditors from URS, Larson, and Squire that our financial systems need review, oversight, and improvement. That is the purpose of the internal auditor. The internal audit position is not mine to justify. Your decision tonight will communicate loud and clear to employees and citizens of Twilla County whether you support transparency, internal controls, and the responsible stewardship of taxpayer dollars, or whether political gamesmanship is allowed to undermine and erode the highest standards of governmental operations.
Comments are noted. That will bring us down to presentation. Utah Inland Port, Stephanie. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm going to present here. Good evening, counsel. My name is Stephanie Pack. I'm with the Utah Inland Port Authority, and I'm here to present our annual report for the Twilla Valley project area. This week marks our two-year anniversary in partnership with the county for this project area, and I'm excited to talk through some of the exciting and innovative opportunities and updates that we have in the project area this year. This year marked our first amendment to the project area, and we added an additional 342 acres to the project area boundaries. We are grateful to our partners with Zenith Development, who helped to facilitate this amendment to the project area, and we're grateful to the county council for your attention to bring about this addition. We're really excited about the opportunities that will come with this additional acreage, and we're excited about the wonderful things that have already happened in the first phase of the project area, which is this area highlighted in blue. As I mentioned, we've had a number of updates for the project area this year, one being the completion of the short-term authority infrastructure bank loan. That was completed this year after the Twilla Valley Public Infrastructure District issued, got their bond issuance done last month in October. And that bond issuance was a total of $33 million that will go into critical infrastructure in this area. We're excited about the infrastructure that has been put in place already. We have road extensions, we have water, wastewater, infrastructure, power, fiber, you name it. The development team has worked really, really hard to get that horizontal infrastructure in place. So we're prepared for the exciting investments that we anticipate will be announced as soon as next month. We're also really excited about the Savage Twilla Railroad. They celebrated a ribbon-cutting ceremony on September 17th. That is a historic event for the county. That's a historic event for the state of Utah. That's the first short-line rail to be created in the state in over a century. And so we're thrilled with that important milestone here in the county. It's going to open up almost 1,000 acres of rail-served industrial real estate here in the county. And we are thrilled with our partnership with Savage and with Union Pacific. Union Pacific has actually featured our site as one of their focus sites, and so all of their customer base now sees Twilla County on that map and identifies Twilla County as a rail-served region. So we're really excited about that update and the partnerships we have with Savage. And that means a lot for the project area, but it means a lot for the county. We have a number of active recruitment projects that are considering Twilla County right now. We have five projects in negotiation right now, and we're hoping, as I mentioned, that Q1 will see a number of those projects close. The bond issuance really is an important milestone in our project area. It really is that first tranche of upfront investment that we can utilize to get that infrastructure in place and paid for. And then, as I mentioned, the Savage Twilla Railroad ribbon-cutting was an important milestone. We're going to continue to market this project area throughout the year, especially as we start announcing these initial investments into the area. It'll be a domino effect. Once they see that investment coming in, it will make it that much easier for us to land the next project and the next project. We are really excited about our partnership with Union Pacific on marketing this site, and we hope to increase the visibility of Twilla County, not just here in the state, but also nationally and internationally. We've had new, we've had really exciting international opportunities come to the state of Utah, one being the new direct flight into Korea. That really does put Utah on the map and opens up Asia to companies here in the state, but it also opens up Korean companies to come and consider Utah as potential. And the county being, you know, 30 minutes from the airport makes it a strategic location for those types of investments. So we're really excited to pursue those. As I mentioned, the infrastructure work has been tremendous this past 12 months. We anticipate that work to continue into the new year and as we start construction on some of the initial buildings that will be in the area. But we're really motivated by the infrastructure that has been put in place. As the county council may recall, the developer procured about 600 acres of undevelopable wetland just outside of the project area boundaries. We've set aside 3% of the project area increment to put towards the preservation of these critical wetlands. And we look forward to operationalizing those funds and identifying specific projects where we can activate those funds for the benefit of that area. We're working really closely with the developer to set aside those 600 acres, preserve them in perpetuity, and we're excited about the investment that we'll have access to to make that preservation more meaningful through improvements, through investment. Here's a quick schema of where those infrastructure timelines are. A lot of this information is included in the packet that was sent to the county council earlier today. Any questions you have regarding the infrastructure timeline, feel free to reach out to me or a member of the development team. And we'd love to give you an update on where things are at with the infrastructure buildout. This is some aerials of the Savage Twilla Railroad ribbon-cutting ceremony. This picture kind of shows that staging area right along that brand-new rail line. That's 11 miles of new rail coming into the market, which is really, really exciting. And we couldn't be more thrilled with the opportunities that are going to come because of this new asset that the county has. So I'm going to pause there and see if any members of the council have questions for us. One thing I will mention before I end is this next year, we're excited to see, again, infrastructure buildout continue. We're also hoping to see actual buildings come online this, in 2026. And we are hoping to trigger the first parcels of the project area in 2026. And that will be for the 2027 tax year. So that really kicks off and starts that 25-year clock on those areas. And we'll start seeing that differential flow to pay back those bonds, to pay off that infrastructure buildout. But so far, the tool is working as it should.
Wonderful. Counsel, any questions or comments?
I got a comment.
Please.
I'd like to express my appreciation to Rochelle and our management team. Brittany, I think, has taken a lot of the lead there and working with you, Stephanie, to really move this project forward. And I've heard lots of comments, different people that I visit with the Inland Port that said, "This is unique. That moved this far this fast." So Rochelle and Stephanie and Brittany, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I'll just add to that. It was nice, everything that we came up with as a request from the Inland Port, they were very accommodating to listen, to add context to it, and then make it so, like the wetlands that we had talked about and testified up at the Capitol. So we appreciate working with you.
Absolutely.
And look forward to many more years.
Well, we're just getting started, and we're really grateful for the partnership, for the incredible work from county staff. And we look forward to this next year. And don't hesitate to reach out, but we'll be back again next year to report on all things 2026.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for spending your evening with us.
Absolutely.
That will bring us down to our minutes. The November 12th, 2025 meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
So there's no corrections to it. Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Here's a second from Councilman Stromberg. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those may oppose, say nay. Those are adopted. Thank you. Consent agenda, again, check registry is, everything is online, so if you have any questions, what's being paid or sent out to, you can certainly go on that. Chair, entertain a motion for the check registry.
Motion to approve.
Hearing a motion from Councilman Stromberg, is there a second?
Second.
Here's a second from Councilman Thomas. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those may oppose, say nay. Okay, down under the consent agenda, we have... I'm sorry?
Eight.
Oh, oh, oh. Thank you. We have, yeah, well, that's all done. So in the discussion items, the council's discussing the 2026 budget. And there's some different key points that unfortunately I had leave the last meeting, but there's some unanswered questions or comments on that. Is there some things that you have, Andy, that you want to bring up?
Yes, thank you, counsel. There are, I think, five or six items that we needed to come back and discuss. And so first, I would like to discuss one. We talked about the public defender's budget. And I think after the presentation, Cory's here today. If she wants to, if she has any questions, she'll be willing to step up. So after we looked at what she presented a couple of weeks ago, one of the things that we identified is that we are dead last in the state per capita of what we spend on public defender's office. And so I think there was some discussion with some of the council members, and then we got together yesterday with Councilman Thomas to look at what we needed to do to see if we could get more in line with at least the bottom of the counties. And so one of the things that we decided is if we look at the third-class counties, currently we are just over $5 per capita. If we were to move up into, this is a recommendation that we're making, is that we move up to where Washington County is on this graph and spend the equivalent amount where we would be equal with Washington County. So that would increase their budget just slightly over $100,000, but it would put us in line at least with another third-class county. So that is one of the recommendations we're going to make. Is there any questions? We think that makes us competitive and is really, makes it fair that we're putting enough funds towards our public defenders. Any questions on that?
No. Any questions, counsel, that you have? Yeah, we kind of talked to you through that, but just as a public note, we did go to the, and talk with Cory. I know that Councilman Thomas was sent over there and with the manager's office and with the attorney's office to make sure that we're providing adequate funding, that there's representation that is competent and well-paid for.
Yeah, so if you're okay with that, we'll...
Any disagreement with that, counsel?
No, but I'd like to express appreciation to Cory and her, the Department for the Indigent Defense, and working good with CJ's Criminal Justice Committee. And Cory, thank you for the help in making sure that our citizens are taken care of.
Yeah, she says she had a really hard time asking for money, but where we were at, I said, "You have to ask." And that's just the fair thing to do so that we have a good criminal defense. And so we're glad to meet that request, so. All right. Thank you. The next one I'd like to discuss briefly, and this is something that we've been working on with the courthouse next door. We've been working on with the, I can't remember the name of the agency. It's the administrative...
DCFM, I think they are.
Yeah. The courts that deal with the facilities. And so we've been working with them. State facility, that's right. And so I just wanted to show you, this is the concept that they came back with. And so the plan was for us to, the bigger issue, I guess, is we had an agreement with them that we owned the land under the courthouse, the state owned the building. The state, once they finished paying off the building, is they had to give us the building, and we didn't necessarily want the building. And so we're selling them the land, and we've been working with them for a little bit. Now, there's one key issue there. It's the Sally Port. The Sally Port is currently a lot further back, and it would cause some problems. We were hoping at some point that they could build their Sally Port closer to the building, but there's utilities that go through there, and so they had to back it off a little bit. And so this was their design for a new Sally Port closer to the building, and then they would install 22 parking spots as well. Now, there's a little bit of, let me go to the second picture here, is that we have to keep the old Sally Port while they build the new Sally Port. So they, and so we hope just to tear down the whole building, but that's not, that doesn't work for them, and I don't think it works for us either. And so what we, their tentative plan right now was to start design in mid-year, about July, and then they would start their construction in December of next year. But in order for them to do that, we have to tear down part of the jail, or most of the jail. And so I put in a half-million dollars for us to tear that down. Now, we'll get reimbursed once we get, currently, I think they plan on giving us $2.5 million, and they'll have to buy another half-acre from us, and so we'll have to negotiate that extra. But this is one that's going to, it's a great deal for us to get rid of the building and to clean up the site and get some more parking. One of the things that I did ask them to do is that we currently don't have any way to get from one side of our park building to the other with, through parking. I've asked them with the, this new parking lot, to punch that through so that it actually goes all the way through over to the other side so we can get through there easier. And they're pretty amenable to a lot of the requests so far. We'd have some cleanup on some parcels here. As you can see, we have parcel here and here and here. And there's a road right here, actually, that goes into part of the building that we would have to get that road vacated, and then we would get it all surveyed out and then work with the state to get that transfer to them. They have to have ownership of that whole site before they'll start construction. So just wanted to let you know, we knew that it was coming. We didn't know when, and it was in between the last, it's probably just the last, I guess, is when I was at UAC, that they contacted us with this sketch. And so the timeline kind of moved up. And so I added in a half-million dollars in our capital projects to fund the demolition. And we don't, we're not sure exactly how much that part will be. We got an estimate, and it was less than that, but we'll have to get an architect to help us make sure we clean up the other, once they tear down that part, to make sure it cleans up with, up against our building. So that's, if you're okay with that, that's one that we'll get all that money back once the sale goes through.
So where the transportation part of the jail is, where their offices are, where Cissy's...
Cissy's office is right at the bottom, right, if you can see it. It's hard to see, right at the bottom, right here.
Yep. And then the back part, the...
This part, we would, this part, we would probably end up keeping and having, keeping that Sally Port. They'll come back in and tear out the rest of the hallway for the Sally Port, and then they'll board it up. We're working on that with them right now, actually. And just today, we've been working on that with them. But they would, we'll look, that's the reason we need to get an architect is to see whether or not that part of the building is worth keeping. We'd like to keep it if we can, and we'd use that. Instead of having the archive building out here, we could tear that down and have some more parking closer to our building and use this space for facilities. So we're kind of working through that right now.
Now, the new chillers we put on, they don't sit on that part of the building.
They do not. Yeah, the big chiller on top that you see on the sheriff's, on the old jail is right where this parking is, actually, right here. So they would be tearing from, right, the chiller going to the east. So that's kind of the line right now. So just so you're aware, that's something that I put in the projects that wasn't there before, but I just wanted to show you that because that just came up recently. Is there any concerns with that? That's...
No.
Great. Okay. I'll jump now to the spreadsheet that I sent out to the council. Wrong one. We're talking about the positions, and so they were, we, here are the remaining positions that we needed to discussion on. One was the event program coordinator, a part-time to full-time within Parks and Rec. As was mentioned earlier, the internal auditor. And then there were three positions in the aging department. One was Meals on Wheels, and two were food preparation workers, and those were both going from part-time to halftime. So those are the three remaining after our last meeting that we didn't have a decision on. And so this is the time that we can talk about this. Or if you'd like some more information, we can certainly provide that.
So where we're currently at, counsel, we can either talk about that, but we're still at a four. If we want to have the full council involved, we'll do that on the ninth, which is probably proposed from a few of you. What's your thoughts?
So there's one full-time position, is that correct? And then there's two?
There's, so the top two, the event programming is going from a part-time to a full-time, and then the internal auditor was going from the .49 to a full-time, to the one that's the other. Those are the two full-time. The others are just moving from part-time to a .5, like a .25 to a .5 is what they're moving to. If you'd like to discuss some of those, and then we can just have a few, I know that...
You want to discuss some of those, or do you want to wait until the ninth?
We'll wait until the ninth.
Hearing a motion from the ninth, so we'll, is there a second to table those to the ninth?
Second.
Here's a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those may oppose. Okay, we'll table those to the ninth.
Okay. The next one I'd like to discuss just briefly, as well as the tourism budget. As you know, the state law did change, and I've been discussing this kind of with some of you just one-off right now. Let me just pull that up quickly. And so what we're looking at, we have two taxes. We have the transient room tax, and we have the restaurant tax. And the state changed before. We had a 53-47 split between marketing and projects, and that has changed. And so one of the things that we, and I think as we started the budget, we kind of were trying to decide, how do you split these things out? And one of the recommendations that we do make is with the transient room tax, currently we pay for the salary out at Desert Peak, the marketing person, and then the marketing person in the chamber is paid out of that. We would recommend coming out of the transient room tax. We've done promotions typically, and what we would recommend, this is where it would change slightly. This is where the TRT board gets together and decides after we send out the applications is, they would still have all of the promotion. And this would include the 101 things that we've talked about before. That's a promotion as well. And the thing that we would like to change is, in last year, we didn't have project money because that came out of the other fund, but now it's changed to where you can do more projects out of either, it's kind of, they're very similar now, but we would recommend this is that we allow any historical museums, any of the museums not owned by the county. So that's, that's the Grist Mill and that's Wendover. Any of the others could apply for project money that would go to the TRT board. So they would have an opportunity to apply and get funds from that.
For capital.
For capital, but just the museums. Not, it's not opened up to everything else. It would be very narrowly focused. Is that correct?
So what we would like to do is to go in with very specific things that it could be used for. Never again would we allow people to use the capital funds to reimburse for rental fees or those. They would have to show some examples in the past that were good projects that happened at the museums, where the Clark Farms would do improvements that would draw more public to their facility. So we would, we would like to go into the tourism board and really coach them on what that actually looks like and how they could approve those projects appropriately.
Yeah, we'd be clear on the application as well as this is what you can, these are the types of projects you can apply for.
So I think one question that's come up at different times is, who can apply for those, right? Whether they can be nonprofit, I mean, so we'll clarify.
We're looking at right now, actually Megan and I are meeting tomorrow morning, to look at the actual application and to put, these are what's acceptable and what's not acceptable on there. We have some ideas, and I don't want to cut Tracy out of it because we'll be talking to Tracy about this. But in the past, we had a process where when the applications were collected, they were actually coming to me when I sat in that role, and I would talk to the applicants as they came in, and then we could talk through if their application was actually something that we would send onto the board to look at, or if they needed to make some changes. So there'd be more clarification on the application itself and when they applied.
Yeah, we may clarify which museums. It may be the Sons and Daughters, Clark Farm, the Red Church, Ofer. We would just identify.
All the thing of this, no, is we've done that. We've had, you know, they're not a 501(c)(3) that's applying. We've had private individuals applying to fix their home.
Right.
And, you know, things like, so I think, we didn't approve them, but we should just stop them before they even apply and just say, "You can't apply."
Agreed.
And saving it from time of coming in and saying, "Here's my application." Like, I think just making sure it's clarified.
Correct. Agreed. So that would be the one tax. And then on the restaurant tax, we would still have trails, which is really just for the Diamondback Trail. If we could get BLM to hire somebody, we could probably move on with that project. So we would leave that money in there. We're purchasing it for the debt on Desert Peak. We would set some aside for the air race course layout for Wendover, and then we would have dedicated money for the museums that the county owns, which is the Grist Mill and now... which is the Grist Mill and now at Wendover, we would dedicate some money. So that's how we're looking at splitting those up and then making sure we're clear on the application. But there would be some capital money now for the museums, we had the discussion last year, and so we think that's. But we, we had an amount in there, if you, it's on this one, actually. We had four-hundred-and-five thousand dollars is what we were going to allow the TRT board to, for, for those applications, that, that would be the amount they would have. I think they were budgeted three-hundred thousand this last year. So there's a little extra money, but we had it in the museums, which we didn't have before, so, is that?
That's good.
Agreeable? There were just a couple, let me just mention a couple of quick ones as well before we get, I guess I can go to the, the capital prod, the projects tab. We did add some funding in for, we had the discussion about, uh, replacing, um, an HVAC at the senior center. And so you can replace, um, swamp coolers, and that's, it's okay putting it on the roof, but if you put an HVAC system, they can get pretty heavy. And so I put some money in just in case we need to have some money to look, have an engineer look at whether that building can house that HVAC. And so there is a hundred thousand dollars in just in case we need it. But if we're going to put an HVAC, we don't want to have the money to build it, and then they come back and say, well, you need to strengthen the roof. So there is some money there just to, just to make sure we're okay on that. One of the recommendations from one of the council members was to put some funding in to, to improve the, the sound system here. And we did learn, when, when they put the sound system in, they have mics in the ceiling, but the, who, people who originally installed it, they just put them in, and we had somebody come in, look afterward, it specializes in this. They said this room is way too big to have those things mounted on the ceiling, they need to be dropped down. And so we have to make some improvements, that would be one of them, and then we'd be improving some of the mics as well. So we did get a quote on that, and I did add that to the, to the capital projects. I had, had it as a partial was, was what I phrased it before, I, but we actually do have a quote from a company to come in and do that now. So I included in, um, initially we put in fifty thousand dollars, and they came back and they said it's thirty-five would be appropriate for what you're trying to do here. So I did include that, just so that you're aware. Now, on the capital, on these projects now, I talked to most all of you, and I know there are a few questions that you still do have. And so I just put question marks where there was a question that you may want to have some more information or some more, um, discussion on. So if you'd like to go down and discuss those, I know Ty had some of these, and so if, if these are, if you have questions, we can go down and talk about any of those. But so far, the only ones that we, that were different from what I recommended, there are just some comments there that, um, that I think you may, may want some additional information. So, um, I told, I know Ty, you had some of these, or you, you can tell me which ones that you still want to ask about, or is there?
No, I think, um.
Because I know we've talked about some of them, just to.
We talked about some, and things, I, I very well had it and talked to you and stuff, Andy, so, um. Keep her all going down.
Did you, there's, I know there was the, there were the vehicles, I guess, that you, are you okay with the van? We talked about, we talked through that, correct? I just know we use a temporary one that we have to move around, and it's, it's. We have it.
But this, I, I put in a hundred K for us on the American two-fifty celebration, I may get outbid on that, that's why, I just think that spending two or, you know, two-hundred thousand dollars for that is a awful lot of the tax.
And I think there, I think you've provided a copy.
It is, Brittany, it's nothing against you, I just think it's.
I just jumped on board with America two-fifty because I thought you guys would want me to make sure it happens.
Well, we do want to make sure it happens, I'm not saying that.
And I think she did, I don't know if you were provided a copy of a, kind of a outline of what she had, is, was that in front of you? If not, we can get that for you.
I know, and maybe that's one that we need to wait until Wardle's here, because he disagreed with me, and he, he thought he, he was okay to run the war on that part.
There was about a hundred thousand dollars of that was for the event, is that correct, Brittany? About, is that's what it was for the event? And then there was some swag, um, and some, what are they called, the?
Challenge coins.
Challenge coins, yeah.
The swag, all of those.
Yeah. So if that's, that's up to you, of course.
I'm kind of bored with Ty on this, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, it sounds like Trump's right, that you, not to all account.
It was two-hundred, not two-fifty.
Well, we're not building a wall, we're not, I, I, I try to, I think two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars on Fourth of July celebration.
Maybe we keep that on for the ninth, when we have the full council here.
I think, I think he's got one that put in his two cents worth.
I'll just highlight that for further discussion, then. This other one, I think I have the answer to, I think Joyce here, he did have one question on the commercial contract. Was that the one that Jake was working on, or was that a, the commercial contract that you had with your department? Ty just had a question, I couldn't answer it. It was like two-hundred thousand, is that just your contract?
It's the commercial contract, yes.
With Jake?
We have it with, the Appraisers Inc. was the one that did the RFP for twenty twenty-five that we did in July, and, uh, it's Gordon Low. Blaine Hells was the original one with that particular company, they appraised Hill County for commercial for years and years before that, so.
Okay.
Yes.
I couldn't answer the question, thank you so much, perfect. And then there was the, the carport for the Meals on Wheels, I think. You had a question on that, this is up to you, I guess, as a, as a group.
I'm not going to support that, we have most of our county vehicles out here without covering, why, why do you need a fair, that's okay. They're running out of carport down the health department, they want to put a fair, but you better, but nobody else is really using carports.
Okay, Kendall.
About the, the aging carports, that's what we're addressing right here. I think we've done volunteer service with E-Aging, and you got people going over there volunteering to, uh, take out Meals on Wheels and do, do services. Asking people to come out in the wintertime, it's a slip hazard. If we can make it safer on employees, uh, to me, it's a minimum cost. It's not the word, just like the garage, the house and I said, this isn't, this is something that we're going to give, make sure our volunteers are protected, our employees are, send the lives of the vehicles, come and go, come and go deliver meals in the wintertime and say, we don't need it covered. That, that's all, that, that's my point is to say, that, that, that says it all, come and do it once and you'll say, yep, damn good idea, Kendall.
What do you think, Eric, or should we push it to the ninth?
I mean, I'm going to say, I don't, I mean, there's five of us, right? We don't all have to agree as majority. I would, I'm, I'm for it, I think that's how, but if we need to wait till the ninth to split the vote, wait, wait till the ninth.
No, I can be, I can, uh, I can say I'm for it, so that would be still the three, um, on that, so put that down.
Okay. The next one that you had a question on was the archive building, which I, I think I've addressed that, depending on what happens with that building, so that may, we'll leave it in there just in case, because if, it may be to tear it down and to build parking lots there, um, so we'll just leave the funds there. Then the, I think there's two left. One was the, the admin building, the landscaping out front. I know Brittany can explain a little bit more on this, but a couple of years ago, we looked at the landscaping and had a design done, and I think back then it was three-hundred, it's three-hundred-and-fifty?
It was about three-eighty.
Three-eighty, to, to do the, to make it more of a, um, destination, it's, instead of just the grass, to have more people where they can.
Is that one we got delayed from the governor asking us?
Correct, that's one that just started up, yeah, you're exactly right. And at some point, there, there is a concern that if, if we were to redo the back, the parking lot redex, the building in the back here is, that's where our ADA entrance is, and we don't have one out anywhere else. And so we do need to make some improvements out there to, for ADA purposes, to get people in the building. It's just a hard thing to do because we're up so high, and we've got to get down to the, to the parking area. And so that would be part of this project, would be to do an ADA ramp up to the, into the building. So that, that is something that we did look at a few years ago.
Any thoughts or comments on that?
Damn time to get a decent supply of coal and update the mine, spend a lot of money making this building look decent. Let's make our, let's make the project, property look decent.
That's.
Like Trump's doing with White House?
That's the missing piece. The rest of you.
That's Eric.
Good on there.
Good?
I, I think four hundred thousand is too much, but I, I just don't think that it's going to be utilized the way we think it will because we don't have the support of the city or the downtown area that is going to get involved. That's, that's my, I, I like the idea, but I just don't think what we want to accomplish is going to happen. I might, I could be completely wrong. I'm wrong all the time, you, you tell me that.
I don't, I, I want to be clear, like, the landscaping actually, like, it does our front landscaping, it refreshes buckies, and it goes around to the back of the building as well. Um, part of it is replacing a lot of the concrete that in our safety studies are already having to be replaced. So some of that could come down based off of what we've budgeted for concrete replacement anyhow. And I don't want you to confuse it with the plaza that we had talked about, it's not the plaza.
I know it's not, right, but that, that's part of the reason why I don't think the draw from the public is going to be there like you guys are trying to get, because there is not plaza, there is not that kind of stuff, that's my point, you're making that point for me.
You're, you're.
But if you want, if you guys want to do it, do it, I've been outdoing, I'm fine, we're not always supposed to agree.
Let's just push it to the ninth and we can have a.
That's fine. And the other, only other question I think Ty had was about the fence out in Ibapaw, if you want Wayne to come and explain a little bit. It'd be good, it would actually be good just for your knowledge to understand what's going on out there.
No, I understand, I just don't like the solution, because I think it's going to make things worse out there. We put a fence around where they put their garbage, they're just going to pour it everywhere else.
I can pull up the map, you can start talking if you want.
Can you hear me? So what's your question, Ty?
I don't know that I necessarily have a question, well, I guess the question was, if we don't build the fence, what are the consequences to the county? Because I think once we put the fence up, they're going to go pour, put trash everywhere else. They're not willing to drive into Wendover like they're supposed to.
Well, what it does, it puts us, it puts us in a campmate with the DEQ. We can't ignore their suggestion or their directive because it might result in some steep fines.
And that's fine, I.
And, and they've given us that directive to.
I just think their solution is a bad solution, if that makes sense.
Well, here, here's.
Unless we can put a sign on the fence that says, please take your trash three miles west to Nevada, so it becomes a Nevada problem.
See, here, here, here's the problem we have, right now it's uncontrolled. I, I can't afford to place somebody out there every day to monitor the landfill. What it will do is give me an opportunity to open it one day a week for a few hours. I can send somebody out there to man it on a Friday for four or five hours. That's when they will be able to deliver their trash. But we have another problem of them setting it on fire, and they're dumping things in the landfill portion that should go in the dumpster. And I can give you a little history of how this all came to be, if you'd like.
Brief history would be nice.
Okay, so, all right, this, this is going to go back in time. When I was at the road department, the county had helped purchase a, a trash truck for Wendover, and they would go empty the cans out there. And that's how Ibapaw was serviced. At some point in that time, that contract ended, and they no longer went out there to do that. So then came a new contract with the tribe that was not renewed in twenty fifteen. And what that contract was, the county maintained the landfill and the tribe paid for the dumpster. So that went away in twenty fifteen, years before I went out there. So I went out to the landfill in August of twenty twenty-one. In July of twenty twenty-one, the DEQ came to the previous director and the office manager and says, because your landfill's not manned, you need to put a dumpster out there. So the dumpster was put in there in July of twenty twenty-one, a month or so before I went out there.
Is that the dumpster right there, Wayne?
Yeah, that's.
So here's the.
Yeah, that's where the dumpster is, there's a, they built a concrete pad and they put a dumpster in there. And so we've been spending about twenty thousand dollars a year out there to maintain the dumpster and to do special projects to clean the landfill up. So we stay in compliance with the DEQ, so we don't lose our permit and we don't get fines. When I, when I went to the landfill, neither landfill had a permit, the Bauer landfill or the Ibapaw landfill. It took me about a year or so to get those permits in place. There's things we can do with that landfill if you're willing to. We, we could pitch it to the tribe and sell it to them so that they could manage it and.
Would they buy it?
I don't know, we could ask them, I, I mean, I don't know. I mean, I'm, I'm looking for solutions, you know, because it's, it's, it's a big knot, no.
But I'm just saying, I think what's going to end up happening is that they're going to go dump their trash all over high heaven out there.
Where's the fence?
Well, the fence.
It's not your fault, Wayne, it's nobody's fault.
If, if you, if you notice, if you.
I think that's just what's going to happen, I mean, we already have, have a county cleanup day because people go dump their trash all over the counties.
Yes, and we all own ten acres out there, correct, Wayne?
Yeah, it's about ten acres, I believe, and you can see where the piles are, uh, that furthest pile down the bottom is just outside of the boundary. So when they push that out, that area is just off of there, that's BLM around, ground all the way around the landfill. And what I'm, need to do is we need to fence that area because they, they wanted us to do it this year. And I told them, I says, I can't because it wasn't put into the budget, and I didn't want to do a budget adjustment. So I told them, I says, I will get it into the twenty twenty-six budget so that we can do this.
How much would you be fencing then, where's the fencing going?
So there is a ranch fence there, but, I mean, it don't take much to cut those, and that's what they've done on the southwest boundary there. It, it's been cut, and we've had to pile up dirt there so people can't drive off into it. Uh, but what I'm proposing is a six-foot chain link fence with some wire across the top to help keep them out. But the problem is, is it's BLM ground all the way around there, and we can't block access to all that. Well, well, here's the thing, if, if we, if, if we close the landfill, if we closed it, we'd still have to put up a gate and put up a fence so people don't dump on it.
Because we still, we'd have to maintain it for thirty years.
We don't do it, I, I just, I just think there's got to be, I don't know, and I don't know what to do because they don't want to drive into Wendover to take their trash like.
Well, well, here's the thing they do, the, the tribe will do a, uh, dump run and go into Wendover with a trailer. But you still have them going into the landfill, utilizing the landfill. We get people from Juab County, because most of the tribe lives in Juab County, and you have people coming from White Pine County over in Nevada that come over there. And they, they're dumping all kinds of things in there that they shouldn't. We've, the last two years, I think we've spent about six, seven thousand dollars this year taking our own truck out and hauling, uh, loads into West Wendover, and that's about a hundred and thirteen dollars a ton. We did it the previous year to clean it up, because there's things that just go in there that don't belong.
I think we need to build the fence, but I think we need to work on a different long-term solution as well.
Be the gift that keeps on giving. Unfortunately, landfills, once you try to close them even, you have to, it takes thirty years.
Yeah, they go into post-closure for thirty years, and you still have to be a steward over it, so.
They're lots of fun.
You can't fix stupid, I mean, people are going to go dump their garbage, or they're going to dump them. So if you put the fence up, let's make it compliant and be that, that's what we can.
That's what we can do, you're correct.
You're okay with that?
Thanks, Wayne.
Thanks, Andy, thanks.
That is the last side of my head on there, the, I think that was it. Any, any other questions on?
Any other questions or comments?
Looks like we have the positions that we'll talk about next week. We'll have to, we'll be presenting a budget, and so, but there will be these outstanding items, these positions, these five positions that need to discuss. And there's two projects, but we'll be presenting the budget, I guess, with, on the projects, we'll just leave them in there. If you want to, next, the next meeting, take them out, we'll, you can just vote to take out this, this, and this, and add in the, the people, um, that you would recommend.
Absolutely.
And then we can amend, you can amend it that way, that's, I think, the best way, absent having the full corm here today, so. Any other questions?
Oh, thank you.
We're in good shape, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that will bring us down to, uh, Nathan.
Good evening, council, Nathan Harris with the county attorney's office. The contract that you have before you is a franchise agreement with Lumen. It's also known as Quest Corporation, and it's also Century Link. This franchise agreement has been, uh, negotiated quite extensively. I've gone back and forth with Lumen multiple times over the last year, trying to get a document in place that, that would work for them and work for the county. It eventually came to a point where I had to say, we're not negotiating anymore, um, and I'll present what we have right, uh, available. And they signed that and they sent it over to us. One of the things that, uh, this council has indicated in prior meetings is that you would like to see a franchise fee in all new franchise. in all new franchise agreements moving forward. With other internet service providers, uh, we have imposed franchise fees on those, uh, franchisees for the use of our right of way. This was one of the major sticking points with, uh, Lumen. Uh, they did not want to pay any franchise fee, uh, to us. And so the agreement that's before you does not have any franchise fee in it. The agreement that is before you is a 30-year franchise agreement. It is a renewal. In discussing this with other county, uh, attorneys, uh, offices from other counties, there are franchise fees that are imposed on uh, lots of other services, uh, in particular Rocky Mountain Power and, uh, I want to, I want to call it Dominion Energy, but I don't remember if that's still their name. They seem to change every few years.
Inbridge.
There we go. And so my recommendation is that, uh, we don't actually have in our fee schedule a franchise fee yet. And so I would say that this, my recommendation to the council tonight is that this, uh, franchise agreement be tabled. We amend our fee schedule, including a franchise fee. And then we go back to the negotiating table and say, this is our fee. You need to, uh, participate like everybody else does in maintaining our right of ways because that's what we're going to use that, that collection for anyways.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
I want to make that motion to be made.
To table it. Hearing a motion from Councilman Thomas. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second from Councilman Hoffman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those may oppose say nay.
Thank you. I'll bring that resolution to, to fix, to amend the fee schedule relatively quickly.
Okay. And Peter.
Evening, Council. Peter Clegg with, uh, Tulac County Human Services. Uh, tonight, I wanted to take a couple minutes, um, of your time to go over uh, the recent results of our, from our, uh, request for proposals on our community opioid abatement and recovery grant, uh, opportunity. This is, um, just kind of a quick overview of what core, again, Community Opioid Abatement and Recovery Grant. The funding is sourced from the opioid settlement, um, litigation, distributions that we get, um, from the, from that national se- settlement. We've rebranded, uh, we've, uh, had these grants in the past that we've, um, these community grants that we've distributed. We've rebranded things and kind of adjusted things to make sure that we had a really high, uh, we set the bar really high with our, uh, different agencies and, um, entities that were applying for these funds. So the purpose of, uh, with this grant is to support local initiatives and, uh, that prevent opioid misuse, uh, expand access to treatment, strength and recovery supports. So pretty much any agency that serves Tulac County residents that offers opioid prevention, harm reduction, treatment, recovery qualified. And, uh, another change for this upcoming year that we had included in the, uh, proposal process was to make, allow the applicants to apply for a three-year project period. They could do one, they could do two, they, they could do up to three. Everyone, uh, uh, chose, took the opportunity to apply for three. The proposal timeline, just in context, we sent out the funding opportunity announcement in September with a application deadline on the 9th of November. We had a subcommittee of the Human Services Advisory, uh, Council who didn't have any conflicts of interest be on the subcommittee to review, uh, all the proposals that came in and participate in a, in a final scoring and ranking meeting that happened, uh, just last week. And our, uh, with the intention of having these projects start at the beginning of January 1st. I'll get into, um, our recommended, uh, applications here in a second, but another highlight from this change in, with this core grant is, um, I mentioned, we really wanted to emphasize the importance of having a robust narrative, um, a project narrative. Uh, a new, uh, requirement with these applications was to have a logic model to, uh, so that the, all the applicants had a, they could demonstrate to us how their project was going to exact change in our community. And so they had to take, uh, identify the, uh, the problem behavior, which would be opioid misuse, and come up with, uh, you know, risk and protective factors, local conditions, and different, and identify the strategies. Um, and you see in this logic model that the, there's red bu- uh, cells, there's green cells, and there's, uh, purple cells. These things are directly related and, um, they would have to build out a logic model. And, um, the beautiful part of this is that having them do this in their application makes our job easier in the, uh, from the department standpoint to really hold them to the outcomes that they said that they would, um, that, that their project would yield. So I'm really excited about that, but, um, I'm kind of a nerd for those types of things. So the main thing that I wanted, uh, to bring to your attention tonight was, uh, that subcommittee, we, uh, came up with these, uh, recommended awards. So the ones that are highlighted in, in, uh, the blue color are the, um, I, were the ones that were on a competitive basis. Um, the ones that are in that peach kind of light color are non-competing applications. So those are with the, uh, Sheriff's Office, the, the correct, uh, the jail essentially, and the Health Department's Prevention Services. So since those are county entities, um, it didn't make sense to have them be part of the competitive process. There was a holdback in our, uh, settlement funds that we've budgeted for, for those county-operated projects. Um, they still submitted an application with a logic model. We're going to hold them to those, those things. It just wasn't part of the competitive process. And then, um, those, uh, ones that are in, in blue, um, were part of that competitive process. So the, the word is that we would, um, what we're recommending with Utah State Extension to continue, uh, the development of their recovery, uh, network, uh, that they have, the Tulip Opioid Response Network. Uh, Bonneville Family Practice with their, uh, methadone, uh, treatment program that they, that they operate. It's been very successful. And, uh, we want to continue to support that project for the next three years. Uh, Rise Up Foundation is a, is a program that does an in-service at the jail that we want to, um, have, that would be complimentary to the, the jail's, uh, funding request. Clinical consultants asked for some naloxone kits for, uh, distribution. And then Birch Family Pharmacy had requested, um, funding to, uh, install some, uh, prescription drop boxes for unused medic, uh, that could be at those locations. And because it'd be monitored by a pharmacy, they would be, um, pretty well, uh, self-sustaining and in the future, as well as they wanted to do some community outreach and education with local providers on, uh, warning signs of, uh, prescription misuse and, uh, uh, that sort of thing. I had intended, my, my hope was to have a, uh, the service agreements or the funding, uh, agreements drafted for tonight. Uh, I'm not prepared for that and s- uh, but since the, uh, annual awards are, um, most of them are within a, a reasonable threshold with the exception of that one for a hundred thousand. Um, my request to the council tonight would be, um, to, uh, if we could have, you know, as those agreements are drafted, have Andy execute those and, um, uh, understanding that, that the, that the scope of those projects are, are, have already been submitted in those proposals as presented tonight.
Okay. Any questions or comments? I like having drop boxes that you were talking about at their, all their locations. So somebody who is no longer on medication, but yet they have a couple bottles that they can go and drop those off instead of getting in the hands of somebody that, um, may misuse them. So I like that. Any other comments or questions?
Is 1,500 enough for the kit distribution? That doesn't seem like very much money.
Yeah, I, that, that's all that they asked for. And I, I think that really they're looking at is their specific clientele, specifically from folks that may be stepping down from residential and, and their sober living, uh, program that they, uh, uh, there is a men and a women's house that, of a sober living program out here. They just want to make sure that everybody leaves with, um, naloxone available to them.
Under the jail, what is the MAT acronym standing for?
Uh, that is, um, medically assisted treatment for opioid use disorder.
Does that carry on after they leave jail?
Yes, so, uh, that's, that's one of the, the really cool things between, um, and we're going to kind of iron out some of those details between the jail and the Rise Up Foundation. But yes, that both of those programs, um, involve, uh, certified peer support specialists that are working with them in the jail, doing groups and education, uh, on, uh, how, really looking at how to reduce barriers to them to be successful after they are released from jail. As well as there's an outservice, or just sorry, not an outservice, an aftercare component where those same peer support specialists are working with folks as they are, are released if they elect to. It's a voluntary program with the idea of like helping them navigate, um, reentry into the community. And so it's, uh, we've seen a lot of success with it. We've, um, ceded some money with, uh, Rise Up Foundation with this, uh, Social Services Block Grant. And we've been really satisfied with, um, that collaboration and how it complements the efforts of, um, Lieutenant Durfee over at the jail. And we wanted to continue seeing that to grow because we feel like it's, uh, we'll continue to see, um, favorable outcomes.
Any other questions or comments?
Can I just, I got one more thing to say before I go home tonight. Went to the first responder, uh, event that was hosted by Bureau of Office and Mad in Utah State and Lieutenant Durfee was out, out, and Cheyenne was out to hear about the successes and what happens in that first responder. Peter, I want to say thanks for sponsoring and making good things happen. These companies have the tools and necessary needs to help do what we're trying to be able to handle help and drug addiction.
I appreciate it. We're trying to set a really high standard and holding, holding these, um, agencies to, to that standard and exacting favorable outcomes, um, ones that are going to be sustainable and, uh, really do benefit the, our community in a meaningful way.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Brings it down.
I did have a, I did have a, that request.
Yeah, he was willing to.
You'll need, you'll need to vote that once he has the contracts that Andy can sign them.
If you would, please.
So the question is, what's your, what's, what's the motion?
Just what?
Just what Peter's.
Yeah.
When the contracts come in, that, uh, Andy has a right to execute it.
Correct. Yes.
It was specified on the slide. Thank you.
Hearing a motion, Councilman Hoffman, a second for Councilman Thomas. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those may oppose say nay. Uh, that will bring us down to the boards and committees. So we have some vacancies on our boards and committees. We're talking about a couple different ways that we can advertise those better, but if you have any interest, um, or if you know of anybody that would like to volunteer to be on those boards and committees, we'd, um, there's some applications to fill out. We'd love to have them, uh, expectations of those and what they should expect from us. Uh, council updates. Councilman Hoffman.
The only thing I have is, um, and Jerry, you might need to help me out with this because we were at UACT and centrally assessed properties came up and it was voted on by the counties to approve UACT to basically work with the counties and help with that, with, with the centrally assessed. And we may need to add this to the budget, um, for UACT dues. It's ba- basically another 12,200. Okay, you already did? Okay. So they're looking to get more involved with the centrally assessed properties to help out the counties in that area, so.
I think that was to help even the small counties.
Help the small counties and everybody else and stuff, yeah. Thanks, Jerry.
We're mostly trying to help the smaller counties of the fourth, sixth, uh, fourth, fifth, and sixth class. I've told you guys, we are getting, we're going to get centrally assessed too. We have, uh, over, uh, 1,200, uh, parcels we're going to be taking, which are mining. We've, uh, negotiated with, uh, the, um, Utah State Tax Commission to do that over a three-year period. That's not just something you just start doing because every one of those, which is kind of out of the realm of what we've done as far as, um, mining claims and stuff and where they're located. Every one that I set up, um, Joy's going to have to go out and, um, assess them and figure out some kind of assessment. We think it's a, it's a good thing, um, in that we will now be in control of it because typically they were actually being assessed that and bringing in less taxes in some cases than what Greenbelt was. Because, and so, uh, uh, it'll, it'll help with that tax shift. We'll get people paying for, uh, the value of the property. And so, um, we are working with the smaller counties. I, uh, been sending da- data. I actually have meetings this Thursday with them to go over how we're going to do this, so.
Hopefully the, these big corporations that don't pay their taxes will start paying them faster if we're all united on this front, so.
And I think that's the plan to, that we all have the same voice, right?
Yes, yes. And the same system, a little bit what we're doing. Cause I also was just appointed in the last month to the GIS Advisory Board as a voting member, uh, working with the GRC, so.
Wonderful.
We're trying to set up standards to, that everybody's on. So the data, data we're pulling from that will be more accurate, so.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Thomas.
Yeah, this first responder, uh, event I went to today was really fun because they give raffle tickets to everybody that was participants. And Cheyenne, who works for the sheriff, she goes out and hustles these store prices. Well, they have two, when you get your raffle ticket, you can put a raffle ticket in the ones that are all the typical ones we get. And then there was a triangular kind of shaped little water tupperware kind of deal. That's where you put your raffle tickets if you were interested in getting a tattoo. So I put two of them and I says, I've never had a taffu, tattoo, so I says, I'll really surprise myself. I love, I love mom or something on it, but anyhow, sheriff compliments to your, to your people. They made it fun, they made it good. And people are engaged, so anyhow, if you see me come with a no, a new tattoo next, next month, then you'll know that I won the raffle, so.
Councilman Strunberg. I will suspend mine also and I'll turn some time over to the county manager.
Just take one item quickly, then Brittany will take one item quickly as well. Just so you're, you're aware, we, we, um, you may have seen in the news that Energy Solutions is, um, working to get low-level, um, nuclear waste from Canada. There was a ruling by the Northwest Interstate Compact Committee a number of years ago that did not allow any waste coming from outside the country. Now they would like to dispose of it here and we get, um, funds based on the revenue that Energy Solutions, um, brings in. And so they will be have, we're assuming they, they were supposed to have their vote, uh, right before Thanksgiving, but we, uh, believe they'll be having their vote on December 19th to allow, um, waste to come into, um, the US and specifically to Energy Solutions, which would bring in a significant amount more, um, money to the county because it's at a higher rate than we're currently getting. And so if you want to pray for something, that would be one of those things that this committee, which is made up of the Western, um, governors get to appoint people and I think the, the state of Washington chairs that committee. We did send a letter of support, um, to, uh, the committee as well, saying that we would be in favor of that. So that's something that we're hope, very hopeful for, which would have a very positive impact on our budget going forward for maybe quite a few years, so. And then Brittany has one item as well.
Please.
Well, I have two now because I think we could make some money off of a tattoo design contest for Kendall if he wins that. That we could donate to maybe Peter's fund, right? Like, I don't know, we're always looking for funds for human service. I don't know. I'm no kidding. No, I actually just wanted to give a good shout out to, uh, our Parks and Rec Department. So last night was the, um, Christmas, began the Christmas season at the mill. And so they had their live nativity and their, their lighting of all their buildings. Um, it's the biggest turnout we've had yet. They had over 400 people. We only had four donuts left. Um, and it is one donut per person, so it was a great turnout. And so, um, it's good to see that these events that Parks and Rec are doing are like starting to pick up and get traction and we're getting more. and we're getting more and more people attend to them. So I just wanted to give them a shout out for all their work and what they've done down there.
Wonderful. Thank you for the updates. That brings me down to entertain a motion to adjourn. Hearing a motion to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. Aye. We are adjourned at 8:10.